Good morning. This is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It is Friday, the fifteenth. This is a un-adjournedized work session for commissioners to chat amongst themselves and or receive information on non-permitted issues, non-quasi judicial issues. We gather every now and then just to chat amongst ourselves. I do believe today we did have a bit of a presentation. I would ask Ms. Larson to maybe tee that up for us.
Certainly, thank you. So this morning, Commissioner, you're going to be hearing from Bayswater, and specifically Mr. Steve Struna and other representatives of Bayswater on developments and improvements and technologies that they've been able to accomplish in their drilling and spacing planning, specifically in the DJ Basin. Mr. Struna is thought it would be helpful for the commission to hear from him and his company as to how they have been able to implement new technologies to improve that process. So with that, we can bring the Bayswater representatives into the meeting and let them begin their presentation.
All right, and I am seeing Mr. Struna in as an attendee. Let's bring him in as a participant. Then we can ask him whom else he may want to bring to the panel. Good morning, Steve. You are muted.
Thanks. I do that almost every time on a Zoom meeting.
No problem.
Thanks. Thanks Chairman Robbins, Commissioners. Nice to see you today. And as Mimi Larson explained, this this conversation, the genesis of this was when I met with Director Robin, or Director Murphy sometime back. She, we were talking about drilling and spacing and how we go about making pad design decisions, well spacing and well-designed decisions. So I have my technical team with me on the call. David Brewster, he's our Senior Vice President of Geology and Geophysics. I have Kumar Ramurthy. Kumar is our Chief Technology Officer. And then John Arsenal. John Arsenal is our Senior Vice President of Engineering. So with that, we'll tee up a presentation here. We've got quite a few slides. I'd encourage you to ask questions as we go. And we'll work through this as quickly as we can, and we appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation with you.
Great. Okay, and we look forward to hearing from you and from your team. I see that all four, all three of them are present now. You know, would just want to, the cautionary approach here is we're not speaking as to specific pending permits. Instead, we're speaking sort of generically about the operations and the model that you you bring to the fore. That's my AAG lawyer sort of approach to this.
Absolutely. This is all post-appraisal type stuff and how we go about making our decisions on spacing and pad design.
Great. Have at it. We look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, thank you. I think, David, are you getting the presentation up here?
David, you appear to be muted.
Hey, David, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I was just saying, I'm prepared to share it from my end if that helps, but did I hear earlier that it was going to be shared on that end?
I think we're looking for you to share.
Okay. All right, let me expand this.
That looks good, Dave.
Okay.
All right, Dave, you drive. So this is all about kickoff. So this is what we're talking about, the multi-well development challenge. You know, where we are in Wattenberg, we have four different horizons that we drill into. That's shown schematically there. One's one well, our typical well's seventy-five hundred feet deep. We drill out two miles. And we stimulate that, we fracture stimulate that along the length of that well bore, probably forty or fifty or sometimes sixty times. And then the problem is in three dimensions shown on the right, we have four zones that we typically develop. And the conversation here is how do we go about figuring out the best way to do that? How many wells to put in each zone and how many wells to put in each pad? And again, we have four zones out here. The Niobra, A, B, C, and then the Codell Sandstone. So with that intro, I'll hand it over to Dave and the technical team.
Okay, for starters, at a high level, you probably all have seen, looking around Wattenberg, that there's a a wide variety of spacing and completion efforts being employed by various operators over time. And this is largely due to just a wide number of variables that everybody has to incorporate into their decision-making. And everybody does that a little bit differently. We can put most of those variables into three buckets. You see there, geology bucket, kind of previous production depletion bucket, and then economics. Kind of diving in a little deeper. Under the geology, some of the primary ones that that drive decisions are thermal maturity. Just how hot the area is, and that drives what the oil gravity is, what the gas oil ratio is, and what the reservoir pressure is. Reservoir thickness is a important one. Obviously, the thicker the reservoir package, the more oil down there to recover. The quality, same thing, the better porosity and permeability, the more oil and easier it is to get out. Heterogeneity, how concentrated are the target intervals or distributed throughout the section? Mechanical properties talk to how well the rock can break and the fractures, how effective the fractures are. And then structural dip and faulting are pretty key. Under the previous production, we we focus a lot on vertical wells previously drilled in the area. Kind of for depletion reasons, but also for obstacle reasons, you know, just how do we have to dance around it with our horizontal wells? And then horizontal wells are the real issue with previous production and depletion. They seem to affect the local pressure and what's left to recover more significantly than the vertical wells. And you can see how drastically those two factors can can change just over here on this small picture here where these adjacent DSUs have very different impacts from previous drilling. Economics is huge in the decision-making process and primarily the the two categories are those top two there, oil and gas pricing and drilling and completion costs. They kind of dance around related to each other. When prices go up on oil and gas, service companies and other associated costs go up because of demand and and by first, they don't go in lockstep. And so it's always a bit of a trick to figure out how to factor those into our calculations. Other ones are lease costs, terms, our working interest, what what costs are for surface use agreements, what it costs to prepare the facilities on the surface, you know, road access, things like that. And then then water purchase and disposal kind of comes under completion cost, but disposal cost can be can be a big issue as well. All operators approach this design process a bit differently, but they seem to all rely on these three strategies to varying degrees, all which are intertwined. First off is the empirical data is the simplest, you know, just looking around at the neighbors and seeing what what they have done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, trying to figure out why. And then a little bit more analytically, just just looking at the the components of what the various operators do and and try to boil them all together into more of a predictive mode using multivariate analysis or similar approaches. Employing models is is pretty key. We always generate a geo model that describes the physical rock down there as precisely as we can. We use mechanical properties models with the various rock types to determine how the fractures propagate through the rock and how effective that is in the stimulation. A fluid properties model, there's a quite a wide variation of how the how the oil, gas, and water moves through the rock. And then economic models really drive the final decision. And finally, experimentation and using new technologies helps us get smarter as we go. So kind of overview of what we're going to hit here, we're going to just do a quick overview of what makes what makes Wattenberg tick from a geologic perspective. Go through the basics of of what the multi-well pad design process looks like. Examples of how empirical data guides our thinking and through some ways in which we integrate empirical data and technology to to improve the models. And finally, a discussion on how drives our final decisions. Like here, here's a map of the area around Wattenberg. This is a well maps. The green dots and lines are all producing wells and this is just to show that Bayswater, from our worldview, we're focused up here on the north edge of Wattenberg. Just as an aside, we really like the the north edge. We've gotten comfortable up there. We appreciate the low housing density. We find that the ranchers and farmers are interested in working with us. There's good alignment between the the surface and mineral owners. And then the local communities seem to appreciate the activity up there. Geologically, it's in a good maturity band. There's great reservoir development and the the infrastructure is good, but not so affected by older vertical drilling that we have issues associated with that. So we find the northern part of the field a pretty good place to be working. From a geologic perspective, here's the package we're dealing with. This is true for most of Wattenberg in one form or another. We have about a three hundred and thirty-foot thick section up here. We have this NiOa, NiOB, NiOC, and Codell, all of which are are very good in this part of the field. And this leads to a pretty good conducive approach for drilling each each bench in every pad we we address in this area. This shows the that Wattenberg is the hotspot. There's a there's a trend called the mineral belt that cuts southwest northeast through Colorado. And in this area, it creates this thermal anomaly in the basement rocks right right in the core here. And this translates into a great area to cook the organic matter in the Niobra section and then turn it into oil and gas. You can see that it's hottest in the middle, and that turns the oil gravity or converts it into much higher gravity oil at sixty-plus gravity there. And forty-ish gravity out here going into the thirties. So this is a really thin gasoline-y type fluid versus more motor oily out on the edge. Similarly, the gas oil ratio is much higher than the middle. This is basically a gas field in the core going to to a black oil belt on the outside edge. Faulting's a pretty key component. As you can see here, an area with very little faulting, you can put a lateral in each one of these beds very easily and stay in that ideal zone pretty much throughout the lateral length. You add in a bunch of faulting, which is very common throughout the field, and it throws your process off quite a bit. It's really hard to to drill an IOA without popping into the Sharon Springs, which can be disastrous to your drilling effort. And similarly with Codell, it's a thin zone down at the bottom, and it makes it difficult to stay in the zone for the entire length of the lateral or even a good fraction of it. So the degree of faulting is a big, big factor in how we design our laterals in these packages. Kind of a general overview of strategy in stacking these laterals in this three hundred and fifty-foot thick section. You can see one of our geo models over here where we have eight laterals stacked through the the objective section. And then kind of a hypothetical sixteen-well package here that shows where all all zones are are good, and we want to stick a lateral in each one. And we've created this staggered wine rack where you go C, A, Codell, B, C, A, Codell, B. So in this ideal situation, we get we get sixteen wells in here or in each of the benches. When you combine that with a schematic of how we think we're stimulating the rock when we hydrologically fracture these rocks, this green area around the well bore is showing what, in this case, is the rock that contributes to production of that well. So this is a pretty good scenario where there's very little overlap between the stimulated areas and there's very little left behind. And the the game is to how to minimize the stuff that's left behind and minimize the overlap. Just another high-level part of the process to decide how to develop these areas. The regional geologic characteristics can really have a big impact. And for example, we've got thinning Codell from west to east. So so zero Codell out here and up to thirty feet over here. I've highlighted a twelve-foot line right in the middle. And if you're on this side of that twelve-foot line, you probably won't want to be spending much time drilling Codell wells. Some of them work over there, but generally not as well. Another scenario is when you get to this thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight gravity oil around the outside of Wattenberg. You know, that seems to work for Codell wells, but not so well for the tighter Niobra package. Another scenario is in the middle of the field or southern part of the field, there's a big part of the NiOa that is missing, has been eroded away. And so, of course, you wouldn't want to place any NiOa wells in this in this part of the world. And then finally, there's a big chunk right here in the north northwest that, you know, everything seems to be present in pretty good thickness. And that translates into variations on the wine rack, as you see here, where, you know, if you're in this northwest area, you may just choose to only drill in the Codell. If you're in this northeast area, you will probably just look at the A, B, and C. And it looks like very few people are chasing the A over there. So so maybe just to be in the C. If you're in this area right here where the A is eroded and the Codell is thin or gone, so you're down to eight wells just in this B and C. And then down here in the the southwest, where there's no A, but there is Codell, you can get twelve wells in that same general layout. And back again to the kind of more ideal hypothetical design for this green area where where you can get sixteen all the way, get all zones for each and each bench. So that's kind of lays the groundwork for the wine rack. But but how do we go about deciding on spacing and completion effort? Well, a lot has to do with what other people have done throughout the history of horizontal development in Wattenberg. And we have studied a lot of our neighbors throughout northern Wattenberg to see what has worked, what has happened, how the different approaches result in production performance. And then go through three case studies to give examples of what we've learned from this approach. This first one is is kind of really hits the nail on the head with this topic of spacing and completion effort. And there there's an example of it right in a pretty small area of four one-mile section, one section square, one square mile pads, fully developed all by the same operator. In in this case, we have two neighbors up here where there's completion efforts were very similar, but more wells were drilled in here, more tightly spaced and more loosely spaced over here on the on the west. And then down here, where we have the same number of wells in each in each DSU, but different completion effort. Just as an aside, we haven't really talked about completion effort in detail. There's a lot of knobs that we can turn to control the completion and the results of the completion. The the two biggest ones are seem to be fluid loading and sand loading. Or how much water and how much sand we put put into the stages when we stimulate them. And we'll refer to those in the terms of barrels per foot and pounds per foot. And sometimes just barrels per foot for simplicity. But here you can see those those northern two pads here, you can see very similar completion efforts, a thousand pounds and nineteen barrels, nine hundred ninety-five pounds and twenty barrels. So almost identical completions. But where there were fewer wells over here, eight eight laterals versus fourteen, the the six-month production has gone up a hundred and forty-six percent in the more lightly drilled pad over here. Twenty-two thousand barrels on average versus thirty-two barrels on average. So just that lightening up the the well count, opening up the spacing has created a hundred and forty-six percent increase on six-month production between these two pads. Now, a little different look down on these two. We've got the same number of wells in each of these pads, ten wells. And here, what has happened is the operator has gone from the same completion effort as up here to a hundred pounds per foot and sixty-six barrels per foot completion effort with a dramatic increase in production.
Hey, Dave, just just to clarify there, that that those production numbers are the average well, individual average well production, correct?
Yes, that's right. Thanks. So that average well count for the six-month period has gone up two hundred and forty-five percent just with that completion effort with the same spacing. So it's a pretty simple illustration that both spacing and completion effort contribute to to increase production. What's not shown here is the economic impact because, of course, big completion effort and more wells cost more than fewer wells and smaller completion efforts. So we'll get to an example illustrating that here in just a bit. This case study number two, we're basically looking at six pads where the completion effort was very similar, but the well spacing was varied or they employ different well spacing in each of these pads. Around sixty barrels per foot, but the well spacing goes from an average of a hundred and eighty feet between the wells to six hundred and sixty feet between the wells. And if you post the the year and a half cumulative production against the well spacing of of all the wells in all those pads, it's pretty fuzzy, but you can see a pretty distinct trend going up and to the right where as you increase the well spacing, your production per well over a year and a half steadily improves. The fact that there's quite a spread here just just points to the fact that there are an awful lot of other variables that that drive what the ultimate well performance is. But I think it's a pretty good illustration of how well spacing by itself, again, is an important driver to to well performance. This final one I'm going to talk about is case study number three. Pretty interesting, a couple of pads here, both drilled in two thousand seventeen. This operator chose to do seven wells with a very large completion effort. And this one chose nineteen wells in the same area with a much smaller completion effort. If you look down here at the table, nineteen wells, average spacing of two hundred and seventy feet, average completion effort of twenty barrels a foot for fluid loading and a thousand pounds for sand loading. Their well cost, when we did the study, it was in two thousand nineteen, and we used our estimator of well costs for different completion efforts. We estimated that to be four million in two thousand nineteen numbers and nine point five million in two thousand nineteen numbers for this this much larger effort of a hundred barrels per foot and thirty-two hundred pounds per foot, which gives you a per pad cost of seventy-six million for this one right here and sixty-six million for the fewer wells up here. Now, if you look at how those wells, how those wells and pads turned out, the the seven wells are in green, and they definitely outperformed the wells on the on the other pad quite a bit. In over twenty-two months, this pad has a two-point-two-million barrel cumulative production. Over that same period of time, the pad with nineteen wells has more because more wells is three-point-three million barrels of oil. When you look at how much it costs to drill those pads compared to the twenty-two month production, you'll see that the yellow Dunn Klein wells gave you cost of twenty-three dollars per one barrel of oil, whereas the the Kona thirty-two dollars yielded one barrel. So in this case, the more wells with smaller completion won on this twenty-two month comparison. So that's an example of some of the empirical data giving us insights on how these things work in this part of the field. Now I'm going to turn it over to Kumar and John to talk about some post-appraisal analysis.
All right, I'll take care of this one. So this shows how some of the different pads have been designed in Bayswater's work over the past five or six years. And these are shown through what we call these gun barrel views. David showed a few of these. And on the top picture, you can see a couple of the more densely drilled pads with with the twenty-four to thirty-two wells per section or per mile and the four different zones that we typically drill. And we would complete these more densely drilled pads with with smaller size fracture treatments just because of the proximity of the wells. And then in the middle, you can see a pad that spaced at sixteen wells per section. So obviously, less dense than the one above, and then with with bigger fracture treatments. And then on the bottom, you know, another example of a pad that's drilled with with just twelve wells per mile, which is even less dense. And in each of these, we need to decide what the placement is of each of the zones and also the completion size for each. Generally, larger completions for wider space designs because we feel like we're not interfering with each other as much in those wider spacings. You know, a key point to make here is that we're deciding on how many wells and what zones to drill in any given pad by various economic metrics that we'll discuss more later. And any of these designs might be the best method to use at a given time, depending, again, on what the economic metrics are that we're looking at at any given time.
All right. Let me take over from here. Thanks, John. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. So what you see here in this slide is the technologies or the key tools that are required for development, for developing these unconventional reservoirs. As David has pointed out, it's good to look at the empirical data and what others have done. But it's also very important to understand what we have underneath our reservoirs, what the characteristics of those reservoirs are and what the characteristics of the fluid are. And some of the technologies or the tools that are shown here and the description of those in the middle column and what are the outputs that we are getting from using those technologies. For example, the logs in the DJ Basin, we have extensive amount of logs. We use that to understand what is the porosity and how much fluid is there and all the other properties associated with that. And then we go and do some testing, like injecting small volume fluid that is called the D-FIT, to understand what is the reservoir pressure there. And then we use this Gopher Frack modeling. You know, David showed some of the proppant per foot and barrels per foot. This is how we arrive at that. We use these information, the log and the pressure information, to come up with an optimized frac design that would be economically suitable for our area or for the pads. And then, once you have all these completed, we can also do some rate transient or what we call this. You take the production data and the pressure data from the wells that are producing to understand the reservoir characteristics by analyzing those data. And we'll talk about a small example of that here. And then, once you do that rate transient analysis, numerical reservoir modeling is something that you all may have heard about. A full-fledged reservoir model where you can put in all these wells and calibrate all these all these parameters that we have obtained before so that we can come up with the optimal spacing and, uh, understand the EURs and the recovery factors. And also we can do some sensitivity analysis. What if we go to a smaller well count and so forth? Uh, this is not usually done because we can almost always get all the, uh, information from a rate transient type work and empirical and analytical type modeling. But when we go into the numerical reservoir modeling, we are talking about full field development and we do that. Uh, some of these larger operators also deploy this when they have large scale, uh, areas to work with. And then the PVT analysis kind of provides us the reservoir fluid information. And we use that to understand how we produce our wells. And then the next two tools that we are shown, uh, shown here, the Revocam is one of the latest technology that has come about. It's basically a geochemical fingerprinting of our oil and rock samples to understand, say, as David pointed out, we have four benches. We can find out where the oil is coming from by specifically, uh, doing this test. We can tell whether it is coming from the A or the B or the C as the frags do grow across these benches. And then the chemical tracer that, uh, shown at the bottom also helps us understand which zones are in communication or a certain time interval. These are all very important because this will help us determine the spacing that we need to go forward with. And the stars that are highlighting there in the left are covered here in this, uh, uh, in this presentation. So let me go to the next slide. Yes. Uh, here is an important concept. Uh, what you see here is a paper that has been presented, uh, by authors. Uh, and the paper number is mentioned above. What you're seeing on the left side, uh, these are the same pictures. Here's a well one, and you can see the wellbore going east to west. And the fractures, it's a description you're seeing for hydraulic stages and the fractures are transferred to that well. And what you're seeing here is there are two wells with similar completions and and the colors indicate the pressure that when you start producing the reservoir pressure starts coming down. And that's how you produce and that's what you're seeing and the colors show eight thousand to almost two thousand psi. Near the world war, when you're producing, that's where the first derardone occurs. And you can see in the middle, the fractures from different, these two wells have not interfered. This is what we call these two wells are in transient flow, meaning the box from where these individual wells are producing from are still expanding and growing. That is important because it helps us determine what we will eventually recover from that each well. And but when you move to the next, uh, slide or the next picture, which is on the right, you see with time, these two wells start to interfere, the fractures start to interfere. And when that happens, there is some kind of a boundary that is established. What that means is these two wells are now drawing from the same reservoir, same area. So that mean these two worlds are communicating. And that's what we call, when you have that boundary dominated flow as stuff, established, your box is defined. So that's where you're going to produce from. And if you put a third well in the middle, you can imagine the onset of that bounded dominated flow will be accelerated because of the tighter spacing. These are some of the things that we try to understand and I'll show you an example later. Let's go to the next slide please. So here's some of the things that, uh, we talk about when we talk, uh, completions that David mentioned. When we try to model these in a go for frac simulator, we take the logs and we replace all the geo mechanical and the geo science information that David talked about. And we input into this reservoir model along with the pressures that we got from the D fit uh, that I mentioned in the table. We can run some scenarios to see what is the optimal frac that we need to pump. And some of the things that you may have heard about, uh, are the gross, gross length and the prop length. These are some of the terminologies that you would come across gross length is basically the totally total hydraulically created fracture and, and what you see as problem, you know, the proppant always lacks behind the fluid. So you can see the proppant, proppant length, these are hundreds of, um, uh, feet from the wellbore. And then what we call as proppant cutoff length, these are the C, D and E are used in our reservoir modeling information. Proppant cutoff length is something that represents the maximum length of fracture available for flow. And it is used as an input value and usually that determines the amount of frac that can be cleaned up after we start producing. And then the flowing frac length, it is basically, um, it's something that supports the flow, stable flow. And then the infinite conductivity, uh, frac length is, it's, this value is used to determine the, uh, basically, um, it tells you, um, to, it's, it's not a physical length. It's basically something that will be calculated from the conductivity of this fracture and from the flowing frac length to see, uh, to match our production. So it's not a physical length, if you would, uh, if you are, if you come across this. So these are some of the things that we use to optimize our frac designs. We can go to the next slide. Remember the two, uh, the slide before that I talked about boundary dominated flow and here's an actual example from one of the base water wells. You take the production data, what you see here on the Y axis is the oil rate, which is shown in green dots here. And the gas oil ratio, which is shown in orange. And then the choke size that you're seeing here in black. What you're seeing on the X axis is the normalized cube, normalized time, which is basically cube oil production developed by the rate at that particular time. So when you plot the oil rate against this normalized time, sometimes also referred to as pseudo time. You can clearly see the transient flow, which is indicated by this half slope, which is indicating that the front, uh, the wellbore where it is drawing the hydrocarbons from is still growing. And when it transitions to unit slope, that means you're, you have reached the boundary dominated flow. And that means your box is defined. Our goal is to expand this time to boundary dominated flow as long as possible to maximize the area available for us to recover from. And that's one of the key goals that we always look forward to. And the plot at the bottom right shows and summary of some of the wells that we analyze where we reach time to boundary dominated flow, which is shown in the Y axis. And the average well spacing for, uh, shown in the X axis. As I pointed out before, it, there's a direct correlation. You can see the shorter the spacing, the time to boundary dominated flow is also shorter. And so when you widen it up, you can see the time to reach bonded, uh, flow is also longer. But then again, as David and others have pointed out, that John pointed out, while this is important, the economics on which we are driven by is the key factor in determining the world spacing too. So as long as we understand that, we can make sound decisions. We can move to the next slide please. So let's take, uh, this slide, uh, there's four plots here and I will explain each and everyone as soon as possible. Uh, the one thing that you want to look at, if you don't have any reservoir information and all you have is the production data. Then what we can do is take that reservoir information and model that and try to history match that. What you see on the left top is basically the uh, oil rate for this particular well, and those are shown in black dots and the orange curve is the history matching information. So we take the producing pressure and try to match that. Of course, any match, if you keep altering all the data, then it's not a non-unique match. So what we try to do is we gather all that information that I talked about in the table and try to fix those variables for our area. Thereby we can get a good match that is based on validated data from our area. And the same thing is shown here when we match the data. The top one on the left is the rate, the bottom one on the left is the cube production. So you can match that. What is the purpose of this? History matching is to validate those reservoir parameters that we got and get an understanding of what is our recovery. And we can also forecast, say, if we have only two years production, then we can forecast what would be the eventual recovery for this well would be. Get an understanding. And then taking all this information, we can run some sensitivity analysis. That's what is shown on the right two plots, top and bottom. The simulation, what you see here is keeping well spacing and drainage areas, uh, sensitivity analysis parameter, we run those different scenarios. And as you can see, more wells, more production. But when you take into account the economics, in this case, the net present value for these scenarios, it does show for this area, for the well that we analyze for this area, fifteen wells or sixteen wells seems to be the one based on the NPV for this economic. So that's how we kind of come up with the spacing. And then once we arrive at the spacing for this area, then, uh, David and others, we would sit down and then we'll figure out which are the benches we need to target and what should be the wind rack. So that's kind of the approach we take. And let's go to the next slide. Um, okay, um, yeah.
I'll, I'll go over a cou- a couple of the, uh, the technologies experimentation, uh, uh, projects we've worked on recently. Um, there, there, there are just an awful lot of different technologies out there to try to figure out what's really going on underground. Well, we, we can do a lot of modeling of what these fractures look like and where they're going. Uh, but it's a complicated world down under, underground and, and it really helps if there are ways we can, we can test our assumptions and our, our models. Uh, the two I'm going to talk about, uh, Kumar already introduced, uh, it's, it's tracer data and then the, the revocam, uh, study. Um, here's the tracer study we did on our GND hangs pad where we used, um, forty-six unique chemical oil tracers. And, and what these, they're, uh, they're, they're chemicals that uh, preferentially glom onto oil. And so when we, uh, pump the fluid in the sand into a stage, we'll, we'll mix a little bit of these chemical tracers in. And they, and the oil tracers will go down and whenever they encounter, uh, a droplet of oil, they'll attach to that oil. And, uh, so what we've done, uh, here's a schematic at the bottom showing, uh, these two wells that we put these tracers in. We put twenty of them in the, the upper well, which was an IOA well and twenty distributed throughout the Codell well below it. And those are also shown up here in this, uh, three D view, the view right here. So each one of these tracers i- is unique, it goes into the rock. And then once we start producing the well, we sample the well, uh, on a weekly or, or twice weekly basis and send the, the oil samples off to a lab. And they figure out what of these tracers are present and in, in what, and what amounts they're present in that, uh, in that production. Um, here's a, a graphic that shows the, uh, tracers that we put into the T well. Um, and over three month period, where we saw those tracers coming out of the eight wells in that area. And it's a little bit hard to see, but, but these bigger spheres represent a higher amount of tracer recovered. And, and also the colors represent a common tracer. So in these three stages, we put all the, the same tracer in. But you can also see that those three, uh, tracers were not seen in any of these other wells. So in this three month period, they're restricted to that wellbore. Um, you can see here where this purple tracer was seen pretty widespread throughout all eight wells. And that turns out to be a fault that goes through here. And so that tracer was moved along a fault. Similarly, this, 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 uh, red tracer was seen on quite a few wells, also along a fault. But one of the interesting things that, uh, the surprises on this was how the, the TA well, which was about two hundred and fifty feet above the T well, saw the most amount of tracer from the T well. And so there is pretty good communication in this first three month period um, between the T and the TA, between the Codell and the NIOA. And so that tells us that there is, uh, maybe too much, uh, communication between the two wells and the spacing was too tight. Here's a gun barrel view of these eight wells, they're right over here. And those two, we put the tracers in are this, uh, the T well right here and the TA. And, uh, you can see there's only about fifty feet of, uh, horizontal separation here, even though there's two hundred plus feet of vertical separation. Um, what we found whenever we had these stacked, uh, Codells and TAs, we always saw underperformance by the wells. So in this case, um, our stand or type curve, what we expect these wells to do in this area is shown by this black line here and the black line here. And what you can see is that the NIOAs and the Codells and the stacked pairs underperform that type curve. And so they're basically sharing a lot of the same rock, uh, when they're producing these wells. Uh, so this is, this was a big learning for us. Uh, we no longer put these, these wells, even though they're separated vertically quite a bit. We no longer put them, uh, so closely, uh, in a map view. Uh, this revocam, uh, study we're working on right now, uh, is very intriguing. Um, basically we've, uh, drilled a vertical well in our, in our, uh, pad that we're currently drilling right now. Uh, right at the beginning. And we collected cuttings in, in a very high resolution interval. You can see these lines over here represent ten foot sampling intervals where we, we took the cuttings. And we sent them off, uh, to a lab in Houston where they do, uh, uh, three dimensional gas chromatography. And what is amazing to me, but, uh, seems to be holding up pretty well is that the, the oils found in the rocks at each of these intervals have unique fingerprints when you look at, um, all the, uh, gas chromatographic signatures in the, in the, uh, analysis. And so, uh, there's each of these lines, we have a, a fingerprint that tells us what that, uh, oil, um, how, how it's different from all the other oil. Then as we turn on the wells and produce the wells, well, for example, uh, have a Codell well. And it'll be producing oil, uh, and we'll take samples maybe once a month or once every two months. Send that off to the same lab and they'll tell us how much that oil is Codell and how much is contributing from all these other zones. So it's a pretty direct indicator of how of far the, uh, the fractures are effectively tapping into the rock. Does it just stop here at the C or does it go all the way to the A? There's been a recent study, uh, published using this data, uh, shown right here. Uh, there's a, the reference here at the bottom, uh, for the presentation that was just made in, at a conference in Houston. This display shows, it's kind of a gun barrel view. So each of these three columns is, uh, a, a wellbore looking end on. So these are all NIOA wells here, NIOB wells here, C and Codell. And the colors represent where the oil production came from at each of these sample increments. And each of these sample increments was about a month apart. So for example, this Codell well, the first month, it had an awful lot of NIOC production uh, and a little bit of Codell, but over time it increased the percentage of Codell and decreased the amount of C. And interestingly, has no, um, B or A showing up in there. Uh, this was a, a pretty small completion effort and so the fractures weren't as big as, as some of the ones we've been dealing with. But this seems like a very, uh, very valuable technique and we're, we're excited to be employing it right now to see with our current completion efforts, just how, uh, far these fractures are, are going up and down and tapping into these, uh, reservoirs.
Okay. Thanks, David. Um, speaking of continuing on with the tools or the technologies that we need, uh, to develop these, uh, unconventional reservoirs. Here's something, uh, that base waters two pads that you look at, uh, one is the KTC farms and the bottom one is the gross farms pad. The top one, it's about three hundred and twenty-six, uh, twenty acres DSU. The bottom one is about six hundred and forty acres DSU, nine wells in the bottom and eight wells in the top. What we are talking about here is the overlapping drainage areas. The boxes that you see here are, are basically arrived at from the numerical modeling that I mentioned in that, uh, uh, table. Um, basically three hundred to three hundred and fifty feet on both sides of the well or is where the majority of the drought on comes from in the first ten years or so. And the height is obtained from all the micro seismic and other work. And also from the revocam pipe work that, uh, David just talked about. So the height is defined around a hundred and thirty feet or so. That's where the majority, even though we may communicate early on, more than that, the, uh, confined height where we are actually producing economically from around is around hundred to a hundred and thirty feet. And, and along the length of the lateral. So what you see here is in your space this close here, you can see that's the percentage of the drainage area that is being overlapped by the drainage area from other wells. So what you see different, the difference between these two here is the average overlapping drainage area and the KTC forms is about thirty percent. So if, what it means is two wells or three wells sometimes are competing from the same box. And that brings down, if you take into account fifty percent, you know, um, of of from these, let me rephrase it. If you take into account even drawdown from these overlapping areas, meaning fifty percent if goes into this well and fifty percent goes into this well, if those are the two wells that are in communication, then the average, then the drop in original oil in place that we can estimate from here is about sixteen percent. Whereas in the gross form pad, it's only about four percent when we place these wells. The other important factor that plays into here is we have done some PBT work, which is basically the fluid characteristics at that reservoir pressure and temperature. The one at the top, the saturation pressure, the oil in our area is kind of undersaturated as opposed to the core area, as long as we understand that. So what it means is all the, there is no free gas available here. All the gas that is being produced comes from the oil. So it's important for us to keep the gas in the solution to produce more oil. So when you produce this overlapping, higher overlapping drainage area and we found out from the PBT work that the saturation pressure, which is the pressure at which the gas is released is five hundred PSI higher than what we have in the bottom. Then it gets even more complicated because you're releasing the gas much faster at the top as opposed to the bottom. So therein by it reduces the eventual recovery. But we still have to look at economics from a bad perspective. So that's what is shown in the next slide. And the same two pads where they are located and you can see the type curves that we have generated, the one in the orange dotted line is the twenty eight well type curve. And the one in the, these are the cume production, average well, cume production. And the one in the black is the sixteen world type curve. And you can see these wells in this pad have are fallen below the type curve that is our defined type curve. But as noted here, we have to still look at from an economic perspective. The whole pad where, and as you can see rightfully, the gross form when we brought it, when we produce the well slowly and using a engineered choke management. We were able to make better than the type curve, even though the right plot shows the gross form has better individual production relative to the type curve, the economics of the entire pad should be considered in the world spacing plan. So these are some of the things that we are deploying with the reservoir information that we have. So. Thank you.
Alright, so I'll pick up here on the economics and this slide depicts the, again, the cumulative well production on the Y axis versus the producing days on the X axis for ten of base waters pads. In the DJ and the dash line in the middle again represents our current type curve for a pad with with sixteen wells per section wide and it it has an average estimated ultimate recovery or EUR of of about six hundred and fifty thousand barrels of oil equivalent. Or BOE for short, and and that includes the gas into the oil. These data show, you know, reasonably good, but not perfect correlation between the well density and the oil recovery. And and here on this, on the bottom of the plot where you see the four hundred and fifty number, we have five of our earlier pads that were drilled more densely and and had smaller fracture treatments because they were drilled more densely. And so they were less expensive per well. You know, between twenty four and thirty two wells per mile wide and and we're projecting on those paths, this this four hundred and fifty thousand, you know, BOE equivalent recovery. You know, by contrast, the the more recent and less densely spaced pads, which which had bigger frac treatments up to the top of the top left of the plot there. Are projected to be, you know, a little bit less than twice the amount of recovery per well, again, per well. At eight hundred and fifty thousand BOE. So we'll come back to to this in some subsequent slides, but but even though this clearly shows better individual wells at the reduced spacing. We still need to look at the economics on a pad level to see, to understand what our best strategy for development will be. Even though the per well recovery is lower, the overall recovery for the pad may be bigger when you put more wells on. So and the timing of the oil recovery also may be more advantageous depending on the production profiles. So all economic factors need to be considered when making those decisions and they can be different at different times for different companies. Depending on what their metrics might be. So, you know, one other thing to throw into the mix here is is the effects of what we refer to as frac bashing or what can happen to existing producing wells. When new balls are drilled nearby and hydraulic fracture treatments on those new wells affect the production on the existing wells. Relating back to some of the slides which discuss the the overlapping drainage here. So the the two curves shown to near the top there, David, if you could point those out, yeah, that one and then the blue curve below. Those both had had that effect. You can see the change in slope on on each of those curves, you know, right there and then back there. So and you know, both of the pads had larger frac treatments on. So go to the next slide and I'll show you kind of a rate time example of that. So this this shows a good example of the pad that was negatively affected by a nearby pad being completed about eighteen months into its producing life. And it happens to be the Thornton pad, which was one of the the wells on that or one of the pads on that previous plot. Shows the oil and water rates on the Y axis on a log scale and then time on the X axis in years. And you know, where this first arrow is shown here is is where the wells were hit by offset fracture treatments. And at that time, the oil rate was about eight hundred barrels a day. And we had to shut that pad in, you know, water rate was down around a hundred and fifty barrels a day. We had to shut that pad in for the completions. And when we turned it back on again, kind of in the middle of two thousand nineteen there, the best we ever got was about four hundred barrels a day. So we were nowhere near the eight hundred barrels a day that was there and the water was way up to over a thousand barrels a day at that point. So clearly some economic loss for us on on that pad. You can see later on with the second arrow that we had the same issue on the pad with some other wells at the bottom line where we were producing three hundred barrels a day, never got back to that either. So for the the lesson there, I guess, for future paths, what we're trying to do with our well completions is do a more in larger groups to avoid that that kind of bashing.
Okay, John, thanks. I'll pick it up here and commissioners, we only have a few more slides left. Hope none of you have not have nodded off on us, but so a little bit on economics, you know, so the key things are costs, cost to drill, oil and gas, direct leasing, buying leases, and that's always a competitive process or always competing with our peers out here to put leasehold together to get into a drill spacing unit. Leasing is consists of a bonus and then an agreed royalty amount to the mineral owner. Drilling and completion costs, as David mentioned, those are volatile. They go up and down with with oil prices currently drilling completion costs are very high and I'll show you that just in a minute. And then there are some ongoing lease operating costs we spent, we call it LOB, lease lease operating expenses. And that's just the day to day operating costs that we have out there. And in addition to that, we pay taxes and we pay royalty payments to the mineral owners. And then our revenues, of course, are are oil, gas and then GL sales and we get paid for those products at the wellhead by midstream companies. Next one, Dave. So a little bit on costs, this is this upper left hand shows our average well costs going back to two thousand seventeen, two mile wells. Back in in sixteen and seventeen, services were very constrained. Our our wells were expensive. They were six and a half to seven million dollars. Then we got a little bit smarter. We did the workout in big chunks. We made some design changes, pushed those costs down to the to the kind of five and a half to six million dollar range. And then twenty twenty, twenty twenty one came around excess service capacity. Very low cost and low cost wells we ever drilled. And in that time period, we're getting some some two mile wells under four million dollars in those two really low spots there. Those are mile and a halfers. And right now we think we're probably forty to fifty percent above on a cost basis where we were in in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So just over five million dollars for completed well costs. And and the bars, blue is drilling, orange is fracking. And then the gray bar on top is facility costs. On the right, the other, you know, key thing is 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 prices, oil prices, and that shows since we've been drilling out here in our two existing funds. And and you know, we are privately capitalized by institutional money since two thousand seventeen. The green is the oil spot price. So back there, spot was over a hundred bucks a bear a barrel. We make our decisions based on the five year strip, which is the black line. You can see back then the five year strip was averaging you know, ninety dollars. Then over time it fell, of course, in twenty and twenty one it fell down well below forty dollars a barrel. And you know, now currently the five year strip is is in the eighty to ninety dollar range. So almost back to where we were two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. And then the plot down at the bottom there, as as we mentioned, it's, you know, spacing and frac size go hand in hand. And we characterize our completion size by the fluid loading. So that's the, that's on the X axis there barrels per foot. And that well well costs, ultimate well costs are on the on the Y axis. So it, you know, thirty barrels foot. You know, well costs are down in the four and a half to five million dollar range and at sixty or eighty barrels a foot. You know, it's well over, you know, it's well over six, seven million dollars. So there's a direct relationship between frac size and costs. So then go on to the next day. And this is just an illustration of cash flows. We get going on a project, we acquire, so that's a negative cash flow. We acquire the acreage, first big investment, then we start drilling and completing. And then we reach a peak out of pocket number there at the bottom in this particular example. This is a, this is a multi-well pad. First five years of cash flows. We're somewhere in the, you know, seventy five, eighty million dollar investment. Then we start selling oil and gas. And then the blue line is the undiscounted cash flow and where that gets back to neutral, that's payout, this particular example about about two years, just over two years. And then we think about value creation on a discounted cash flow basis. So we typically look at a ten percent discount rate, we call that PB ten, and that's how we size the value of the project. And there's there's certainly a lot of issues that impact this cycle time and this time to pay out. Next slide hits on some key economic metrics. So these are the things that we think about as we're sizing up a project. Of course, the operating margin, that's our cash operating margin. It's our, it's our oil revenues minus our lease operating expenses and taxes. We think about F and D costs and that's just what's the capital cost compared to the ultimate recovery of the project. So that's in a dollars per BOE basis. And that's kind of full cycle costs. It's the acreage, it's the drilling completion and equipment costs. And that's divided by the total reserves in the project. So that's a key metric. Another key metric that we think about is it's called recycle ratio and that's simply the operating margin divided by the F and D cost. So for every capital dollar you spend for a barrel, what's the, what, how much cash is that, how much cash is that barrel producing? And a typical recycle ratio here is kind of four X or five X. And then we talk about present value. That's really, you know, how we how we size up our enterprise value. And and there are different discounts. So PB ten, we think about producing value discounted on a ten percent basis. If you have a well that's drilled but uncompleted, we think that represents an enterprise value discounted at fifteen to twenty percent. And then our undeveloped locations on an enterprise value, we think about those on a PB twenty or twenty five basis. Another key metric is the internal rate of return and that's the discount rate at which future project cash flows equal the initial investment. You hear about discount rate or you hear about rate of returns in our business in the twenty five, thirty, thirty five plus percentage kind of rates. Hurdle rate, and that's a, that's a firm's minimum acceptable IRR. And then a discounted return on investment is the PV ten of the future cash flows divided by the capital investment. That's another key metric that folks use and then payout months. And as we've been talking about this spacing decision, it comes down to, you know, which of these metrics do we look at or important us at the time and 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 other firms have other metrics that they focus on. So trying to illustrate this then in a couple of cartoons and 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 we'll wrap this up and see if there are any questions. The top, the top graph there shows ultimate recovery of 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 ultimate recovery per well and per DSU. So as the well count goes up, as John mentioned, that's the green dash line. As the well count goes up, the ultimate recovery, the ultimate oil recovery from the DSU goes up. But on a per well basis, as we've shown empirically and analytically, as the as the well count goes up, the recovery per well drops down. So then if you if you keep those concepts in mind and look at the lower plot there. And that's dollars on the on the left hand vertical scale and rate of return on the right hand scale. As well count goes up, that red line shows clearly that your capex goes up. So you're going to spend more capital on that DSU, the more wells you put in. Each well is a little less expensive. But but the more wells you put in, the more capex you've invested. Capital expenditure you've made into that DSU. And with more capital and acceptable rates of return, the PV ten, which is the green dash line, that increases with increasing well count because you're you're generating more well, you're producing more well. And so the PV ten goes up to a point and then would 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 start to go down if your rate of return on your individual wells became less than ten percent. And then finally, the final concept here is the IRR. The more wells you drill, the lower the overall project rate of return goes. And then there's a concept of the minimum hurdle rate. So if you look at this, this graph and you think about it, an economically rational decision would be to drill more wells to generate more present value, more PV ten up to the point until the project overall rate of return drops below your minimum hurdle rate. So you know, lots to think about there, but that's how we think about how many wells to put into a into a into a section or into a drill spacing unit. And this, the other considerations that we have as a management team then is, you know, how much available capital do we have? And what sort of a project inventory do we have in front of us? How many, how many wells and DSUs do we have that we can invest in? So these concepts are illustrated on the next slide. And it kind of broke it down into a four by four or a two by two matrix, four boxes. And so this is how we think about and and what might influence our well spacing decision. So on the on the on the on the horizontal scale, that's liquidity. So how much available capital do we have to invest in projects? And then on the on the Y axis there, the vertical axis, it's, you know, how much acreage do we have available? What's our available project inventory? So if you think about those, if you're in a situation in the lower right hand box and you have a a high amount of available capital, but not many, not a lot of acreage, not a lot of drill spacing units to drill. Pretty clear there, you're going to drill a lot of wells. You're going to drill as many wells as you can in the section to put as much money you have, as much money as you can to work in your scarce project inventory. And you'll drill as many wells as you can, so long as you stay above your minimum hurdle rate. So that in that box, we're going to drill the most in 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 this universe here, this that box represents the circumstances where you drill the most wells per DSU. Conversely, in the upper left hand corner, if your available capital is low and you have a lot of opportunities to drill, you're going to maximize the internal rate of return for every dollar you spend. And and in that case, you're going to drill the fewest wells per DSU. And and those are kind of two clear, I guess, bookends on our on our spacing decisions. The others are are less, you know, less probably less clear in terms of of what key metric you want to maximize. We think if you have a low project inventory and low available capital, you're going to drill fewer wells per DSU when you're going to try to maximize PV ten created for every marginal capital dollar spent. And then the upper right hand corner there, my CFO and I argue about this one all the time. You know, that's a situation where you have more capital than you can spend and more projects than you can do. None of us have ever been there in our career. So we don't, we don't lose a lot of sleep over that one. But if you were there, you would probably be thinking about recycle ratio and payout, you know, how quickly can you get the cash back to redeploy or to return to shareholders? So that's that's it in terms of our, in terms of our prepared slides. It was, it's quite a lot here and I appreciate your attention and the opportunity to have this conversation with you and and I hope you might have some questions. Hope you might have some questions um uh for us, or if there's anything we could further clarify, we'd be happy to do so.
Fantastic. Uh, thank you for the slide deck and for this information. Um. I, I think this is kind of the first of Steve that we've had a presentation of this character from an operator. Um, so we do very much appreciate it. Um, a lot of information here. I do note to my fellow commissioners that the slide deck we shared with us. Um, earlier this morning, so um, you've got it. If you wanna go back and and try to, you know, work, work through the various issues. Um, looking around at fellow commissioners, does anyone have questions for the panel? Commissioner Messner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I have a question. I mean, I could ask a million questions on this, right? But um, uh, but first I just wanna say that I really appreciate. The uh, the depth of this presentation, because like Chairman Robbins indicated, I, I, I have not seen this from an operator before. Um, that, that was a great presentation. There was lots of information, and I, I really appreciate that. I appreciate that kind of the, the honesty and the, and the, and the big picture aspect of that. So that was really helpful for me. Um, and so I'm not gonna go into the million questions that I have, although perhaps I'll write them down at some point and we can um. Uh, I can send them to you. But uh, I did have just one question, because I hear this a lot, you know, and this is around the economic piece. How much does hedging tie into the economics and the decisions that you're making, particularly the, like, right now where? Oil prices are going up. I mean, maybe they're going down a little bit now, but I mean, they're, they're, they're higher than they were three years ago. And, you know, so I'm hearing some companies have, you know, hedged some things, and that it's affecting that cash flow. And 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 ability to move forward. And I'm just kind of curious to be chat a little bit about that.
Oh, that's a great question. And 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 certainly Commissioner Messner, if you have questions, email them to us. And 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 we'd be happy to answer other more detailed questions. David, if you back up one slide, maybe I could, I can explain, help. So the way we, and we, we hedge and 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 we continuously hedge. And unfortunately, we hedged barrels in, 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 in twenty-one, and so now we're paying our hedge counterparties. We're, you know, our, the, the oil price is above the, 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 the top of the hedge, so we have to pay the, the banks that we hedged with. And the way we think about hedging and what we promise our investors is that we'll hedge to protect a, a minimum rate of return. So um, right before uh we commit to a frac crew, because that's where the big, that's where the big dollars are invested. We will hedge uh based on the then forward strip. And what we do is we, we do a costless caller. So we'll say, okay, what, what oil price do we need to deliver that minimum rate of return? And now, you know, let's say that's, you know, right now, let's say that's uh, oh, you know, fifty dollars. So we will, we will price a put, which is our ability to sell oil in the future for fifty dollars. And whatever that put costs, we'll then, uh, so we'll buy that put, and at the same time, we'll sell a call. And that call is, is uh, you know, whatever uh, someone would pay us to be able to take. The oil above that price. And so we get this costless caller. Right now, the costless callers are probably fifty to a hundred and ten dollars or something like that. You know, historically, they've been a lot tighter, and 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 again, we have some costless callers that we did in twenty-one that were probably forty by fifty-five. So we're, right now, we're paying everything above fifty-five, but we religiously hedge uh to protect uh that, that return. You know, others hedge because they have leverage and they need to be able to make their debt payments. We don't, we don't have a lot of leverage. That's, that's not a concern for us, but we're always hedging to protect that minimum hurdle rate, and that's certainly. Will always be a part of our, uh, of our uh financial strategy.
Hey, Steve, you might just touch on percentage hedge versus unhedged kind of.
Yeah, that's a good, good point. Lynn, Lynn, I didn't introduce Lynn. Lynn's our chief operating officer here. Um, so uh. I said, we don't have a lot of, a lot of debt. We, we are, we, we do have some, and our banks require us to be seventy percent hedged. And so uh, but, but as, as we're, we're growing production. So um, as, as we continue to add barrels, we'll probably drop down to the fifty-five percent hedged. And then, you know, every six months, we've got to catch up for the bank's purposes to be uh, to be seventy percent of our production hedged.
Great. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Commissioner McGowan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thanks so much for this presentation. I agree with um Commissioner Messner and Commissioner Robbins. I don't think we've gotten this kind of presentation with this much detail. I actually feel like I just took a semester college course and in one hour. And I'm glad there's not an exam at the end, because this is a lot of information, and some of it is like from a bad dream where you're like. I showed up to class and there's a final exam, and I don't know what's. It was, it was super helpful. The, I think the most um, the newest thing for me that I learned today is. Uh, just because more spacing might mean the most production out of a well or the highest rate of return. Doesn't mean that's the choice that you'll make, because it's not necessarily per well, it's the total cost per pad and your rate of return. I don't think I, that's ever been explained to me before, like how, how you decide how many wells to put on a pad. And and where to, to pull from. I, I am curious, and I'm not sure I'm understanding um correctly. The way, the way that drilling is happening now is that you're trying to completely deplete a formation so that. And never say never, but in the, in the past, the vertical, maybe the thought was the vertical well had pulled all the minerals out, but then we discovered a new technology. Now we have the vertical um that's pulling from some of the same formations. But now I think what I hear you saying is the way that production is happening. There isn't gonna be someone coming back and saying there's more to, there's more blood to get from this turn up. Like, once, once you guys have come in and finished pulling the minerals. That's probably it for those formations in these areas. Is, is that correct, you think, or?
Um, I, I think that's, I think that's directionally correct. Uh, you know, I, again, we were, as you said. You know, we thought we had it figured out when we were drilling vertical wells. And and now the new technology, horizontal drilling combined with hydraulically fracturing. Uh, we're getting a lot more oil, but, but having said that, we're probably only getting eight to ten percent of the oil in place that's down there. So we're leaving a heck of a lot behind. And so I, you know, never say never on going back in. And and uh trying to do some additional drilling. Uh, that, we view that as unlikely at this time. However, uh, one opportunity that, that Kumar and his team are looking at for us is enhanced oil recovery. So in the, in the Eagle Ford, for example, uh, which is a very similar uh age of rock, a type of rock that we have here. Um, they're injecting gas, and the gas gets uh injected into the horizontal well pores. It goes out into the formation, it gets um, ad- absorbed into the oil. It swells the oil, the oil becomes more, more, more uh mobile, then you produce that well back. It's called huff and puff. You, you inject in the well, and then you produce back out of the well, and it really enhances the oil recovery. And we think there's some opportunity for that here in Wattenberg. So that would be, and, and, and that could require. Um, uh, you know, drilling some new wells down there and maybe do some, you know, some wells are injectors and some wells are producers. But, but, you know, outside of enhanced oil recovery, uh, we think what we're doing here is, is. Fully depleting, you know, the economic resource down there. Uh, and I don't know Kumar or John, if anybody has anything more to add to that. But, but again, the enhanced oil recovery idea is an exciting one. That we think might have some application, particularly where we are in Wattenberg in this heavier oil uh rim of, of Wattenberg.
Steve, can I follow up? So I, I think I've heard this before, but when you say fully depleting the, the economic reservoir. That's still just eight to ten percent of what's down there, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the frustrating part. Yeah.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah.
Kumar, did you wanna add to that?
Uh, yeah, um, I think Steve covered it very well. The only point I would add to that is. When you're in this type of reservoir where we have solution gas, when you produce this and go below the saturation pressure. You're leaving all the heavier components. That is one of the reason why we are only getting eight to ten percent recovery. And by injecting the gas, you're lightening it up again and getting more of those oil back. So that is one of the objectives of the enhanced oil recovery.
Yeah. Commissioner McGowan?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, probably a dumb question. When you say you have to inject gas, does it have to be a certain type of gas? Or could, could it be injecting CO2, for example, and then having the benefit of some carbon capture?
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, it, it could certainly be, it could certainly be CO2. The way, the way we would think about it initially is, is injecting, you know, the wet uh, uh, lease gas that we have out there. But, but CO2 is certainly used for enhanced oil recovery in, in other places.
Thank you. Uh, this was super helpful, and I probably would wanna have it presented several more times, so it will sink in. But super appreciative, it's a lot of information.
Yeah, well, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to have the conversation with you and um, you kind of understand things from, from our shoes. Uh, and then that's what we were, we were hoping to accomplish here. And, and, you know, absolutely, if you have more questions, or if there's a portion of this that we could revisit again, we'd, we'd be happy to do that.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, thanks. It, it really um provides some uh valuable additional perspective. As we go about our jobs with regard to reviewing permits, et cetera, from a, you know, from an angle that, that we, you know, normally are not, are not thinking about. And so this has been very highly helpful. Again, I agree. I, I feel like I've just taken a college course and. In something that I didn't really plan on signing up for, and I'm trying to understand it now. So um, I, I'm gonna go back through the slides, and I, I know, I know how to reach you, Steve. Um, I'll make sure that the other commissioners have contact information if they've got further follow-up, and we can. You, and you can patch us through to the right person on your team.
Terrific. Happy to do that.
I didn't mean to cut off. Is, did any other commissioners have questions? All right, seeing none, uh, we will let the panel go. Thanks again for taking a bit of your Friday and for putting together this uh extensive uh slide set. We do appreciate it.
No, you're welcome. Thanks. Have a, have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you all. Thank you all.
All right, Commissioners, um, this is our unagendized uh agenda in which we um. Just bring things to the table for discussion. Does anybody have other uh items they'd like to talk about?
I mean, what I was gonna talk about is not time sensitive, and I know this maybe went a little longer than what some people anticipated. So if we wanna put off talking about the Martinez Erwin Fund for another week or two, that's, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Why, why, why don't we do that? I, I know next Wednesday's agenda is pretty light, and so we could have Commissioner comments at that point in time.
Sure. And I'm not, all this is, all I'm doing is, I'm just, I, I'd like to solicit some input from you guys as far as. Like some expectations for the fund, like update you a little bit on what the fund is. I mean, I know that Brett and Mike, you probably know a little bit about it, but just kind of give you an overview, what projects it's been spent on. We do have a remaining balance. We've got some upcoming projects that are gonna be presented to us. I, I wanna solicit some feedback on expectations for those projects and making sure that strategically they tie into what this commission wants. This funding to be used for, as well as what this funding is required to be used for um by the AOC that was created that developed this fund. And uh. Um, and then kind of an expectation for reporting. So we have spent quite a bit of money on some existing projects that we haven't heard about in quite some time. And so certainly moving forward with new projects, what reporting expectations there are. But then I think that, that some of these projects are, are pretty soon gonna be prepared to report to us. And so kind of what we wanna see from those reports. So that's kind of what it will be, but I'd like to just pick your brains on that, so we can.
Yeah.
Heard it on Wednesday. Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. I, I think another reason that I'd like to um, set that up for perhaps like next Wednesday is. I wanna make sure that Scott is brought in, because he's been kind of point on that, and see, he's not with us right now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I talked to him just before this meeting. He was in the meeting for a little while, but I imagine he didn't think this was gonna go quite so long either.
Yeah, he's, he's dropped out at this point, so.
So, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Brett?
Yeah, John, sorry. What was the name of that fund again? I don't, I don't know much about it.
It's the Martinez Erwin Fund, so it was the fund that was developed um because of the, because of the AOC. Associated with the, the explosion of the pipeline and, and, and Firestone.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Brett, we, when I settled the Firestone, I was back director way back when John was a volunteer commissioner. We took it to the commission, and they agreed to take the penalties that were associated with the settlement, which was the, I think, kind of the largest. Penalties ever assessed, and we directed those to be put into this fund, um, which is named after. Um, the folks who um were involved in, in the tragic accident. And um, so the funds are set aside to uh be used by the commission to advance. Um, you know, health safety efforts. Similar to, you know, the kind of the flow line issues that were associated there. And so it's a pool of money that we've set aside that is pretty substantial. And then every now and then we use that money to advance scientific projects to assist with public health, safety, welfare, environment, wildlife resources. And so um, I think it's opportune time to, you know, chat about it. John, so I appreciate you bringing it up. Let's make sure maybe and Scott are in the room as well when we have that discussion, but that.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Are we gonna, do we wanna officially add that to the agenda then for Wednesday, or is that gonna come under Commissioner comments?
I'll suggest to Mimi to go ahead and just add it. I mean, you know, let's just add it as a discussion item. That way everyone is aware that we're gonna be talking about it.
And, and that's fine. I mean, I was, I was hoping to do it a little bit informally first, uh, because I do think that there's gonna be a formal presentation on this. In August, which is what I was gonna talk a little bit about. But I mean, we can have this conversation on Wednesday, and we can, I can tee it up and, you know, have. You know, President, I mean, I've, I've talked to Scott, and I've talked to Mimi, and I've talked to. You know, Kim and those a cook, and I've talked to Sarah Bartley. I mean, I'm pretty, um, I'm, I'm pretty prepared to like do a, a, a little bigger. Dive into it if we wanna do that on Wednesday.
It, it feels to me like maybe I'm with Christian Messner, or maybe we have a more informal kind of conversation about it first. And then knowing that CDPHG, I think, is ready to present on some of their flyover activities that the commission funded previously. That that might be a more appropriate time then for, because I think we're gonna hear public comment and things that people are thinking about. CDPHG might have some ideas about other projects that they want to have funded. But so maybe if we had a conversation first about Commissioner Messner explaining kind of the, the guide, the guardrails around the fund. What's been funded to date, what we think presentations are upcoming, and then um. We also recently uh funded kind of the four buckets of air emissions work for Sarah to work on for the commission. And so it might just be good to have an informal discussion with the commissioners about what's happened to date. As part of maybe one of our planning meetings.
That's fine, too. I'm, you know, whatever.
Yeah, let's do that, rather than dive into it, because I don't wanna create this expectation that we're gonna have this big presentation. Because I do think, like Karen said, um, I do think that there's gonna be a formal. Well, we need to expect some of these projects to actually report to us, and I know that there's already plans for the air monitoring. Uh, flyovers to present, but there's some other plans that need, that need to present to us that we funded quite, quite a while ago. Um, and so uh, and I, so I do think that there's gonna be that presentation, that information. And then there's gonna be an ask. So if we can do like an informal one, just so that we're prepared for that, for that formal presentation. That's gonna be the reports and the ask. I think that would be helpful, because then that will enable me. To like create a little structure around what these guys need to present to us in the ask, so.
Sounds good.
Uh, that's what I know.
I just wanted to say I really appreciated that uh, that presentation. They over my head, but uh assimilated some of it. So I appreciated it very much. Thanks for setting that up.
Yeah, that was good.
What else? All right. Have a good weekend. See everybody next week.
Thanks.